The flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. I need a motion to approve the 112811 and 1205, your 11 school board minutes. Is there a second by Keith? Changes, deletions, additions?
(inaudible)
Chair, if you have a chance, would you like a chance to look at the 1128, which was our tour minutes? And 1205, which is our last one. All in favor of approving as presented? Again, opposed? Abstentions? We have four abstentions, Hank, Kent, Jimmy, and Joe.
You've got to do December five minutes.
And, actually, I asked for a motion to approve both. They approved both. The correspondence folder consists of substitute reports, I'll pass those around. Commendations and good news.
I have a couple things first from the student council. They just finished up on Friday an incredible food, canned food drive, thank you, sorry. The goal was 20,000 points, which is a combination of dollars and cans, depending on what you brought in for what day. They raised 20,504 points. That totals $5,969 in a check, as well as 5,714 food items to the Goffstown Food Commission. And they were featured on Channel Nine News that night, which was very exciting. At the assembly, after the assembly, some of the members went to St. Lawrence Church to help stock the food pantry. And they wanted to let you know that the canned food drive, they've won eight years in a row from the National Association of Student Councils as the most effective project. And it's the largest canned food drive for high schools in the state.
That's great.
That's fantastic.
Awesome job.
Terrific. That may be the best news, but we haven't heard it all.
(laughing) Got to rank them.
No, no. It's, I mean, really, what a great commitment by our students to the community.
And the assembly is always well attended, and the students are great, very respectful. It's a privilege to be a staff member.
At Mountain View on December ninth, we had our parent-teacher conferences during the day, very successful, quite a lot of parents came and spoke to the teachers about how kids were doing. Was well attended. Report cards went out on December 16th, and we had our band and chorus concerts here at the high school that were very well attended and a big success. We've had about 50 extra kids in chorus this year, so that meant that when we had our concert over here, we had standing room only, it was really well attended. It was very, it was a very good, very good concert.
I'll start with one late. Leslie wanted me to let the board know that parent-teacher conferences on December ninth were extremely well attended this year. Lund Lake had better than a 90 percent showing. And then from Bartlett, the holiday spirit has been seen at Bartlett during the last week. Last Thursday, the Mountain View Middle School Band and Chorus visited the school. Today, dancers from Dream Vision performed a holiday show. And students will be going to Goffstown High School on Friday for a band and chorus music performance. Tomorrow, on Tuesday, Bartlett's fourth graders will be spreading holiday cheer by performing holiday music to senior citizens at the Edward Roy Apartments. The fourth graders and string students have been practicing very hard with their music teacher, Joyce Pang, and classroom teachers, Mrs. Ward and Ms. Weber, to get ready for this performance. Since the administrators had a discussion on recycling, Bartlett has been working on increasing the amount that they recycle, especially during lunch. Since then, we have, they have more than doubled their recycling, going from four to five bins to nine to 10 bins a week.
That's great.
And then at Maple Avenue, we are still collecting pajamas for our pajama drive. We are also collecting fabric squares to make quilts for a quilts for Thailand project that Barb Mostu is running, and it's for orphans in Thailand. Thank you to the PFT for providing lunch for some hungry teachers during our parent-teacher conferences. We especially like the broccoli. And grade four holiday concert tomorrow at Goffstown High School.
Very good. Thanks very much. Any other good news and commendations? Seeing none. Public comment? Moving right along to standing committee reports. Since we did not have an administration and finance meeting before this meeting, I'm going to defer to Mr. LeBar.
Bring a manifest to the board this evening in the amount of $1,566,083. And as is the board's custom, major items in this particular manifest are payroll activities and payroll taxes, as well as health payments for health insurance, for a total of $1,158,717. Special education accounts payable activity during the month of November amounted to $37,776 for transportation. And general expenses, we did have a payment to CMK Architects. This is a progress payment for the elementary facilities and engineering study that's ongoing. Payment to our supplier for heating oil in the amount of $6,500. This was delivered to Goffstown High School. And the last, the last payment to make the manifest is to the town of Goffstown for $10,100. These are the assessment of sewer fees.
We got a motion to approve the manifest as presented. Hank's the motion. Any questions regarding the manifest? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the manifest as presented? Opposed? Abstentions? Were unanimous? Ray, any other admin and finance items?
That's it.
Human resources, the next meeting is scheduled for January 9, 2012, 6:00 p.m. in the S.A.U. Fine communications?
Next meeting, gentlemen, certainly.
January 2nd. At 6:00 p.m. at the media center here, part of our meeting, C and E. Jenny, the next meeting I have scheduled is 1/9.
I don't think anybody's met since our last meeting. I don't think we've had any subcommittee meetings.
Report of the budget committee.
That'd be me. Several Tuesdays, Thursdays, we've gotten together. We have completed our first pass of both the town and school budgets. As of last Thursday night, the approximate reduction to the school board side, to the school side, and this is approximate, $377,208, comprised of several of the following. A reduction of $128,000 for the smart boards, a reduction of $24,642 for the late buses, a reduction of $20,000 for staff development, a reduction, and this is an approximate, $47,000 for oil.
Is that the Mountain View oil, or is that?
It's, I'm talking district.
District, because I know Maple and Bartlett didn't see a reduction, but Mountain View's budget line saw a reduction.
I think all schools who have fuel oil saw a reduction. I think they caught them all.
Great.
Okay. It's a reduction of the Mountain View Middle School media para of $16,000. It's a reduction of $10,000 for the clocks. It's a reduction of $25,000 worth of carpeting for the library here. It's a reduction of $50,000 for parking lot enhancements. And those, those are the highlights. It won't add up to 377, but the rest were much smaller cuts. There is, I think as the phrase goes, there's another pass at the apple on Thursday. It's the chair's plan that both the school and town budgets be finalized Thursday night. That meeting starts at seven at Town Hall and goes till it's over. Apparently, there is a second pass at the apple, I believe is the phrase, so adjustments still could be made that haven't been made yet.
In fairness to a hearing on all of those motions, I will tell you that Jen did a very nice job in terms of speaking to the rationale for the appropriation request in each and every instance. I could go through some of the highlights about our experience with fluctuating fuel oil prices, our need for the late buses, and the reason for that appropriation, especially at the middle school. The rationale for increases in the supply lines to support our mathematics curriculum. And these are all things that were part of the discussion and that the budget committee heard. It's really tempting to go through all of them and list them off. Interestingly, one of the rationales for cutting the fuel lines, and it was not the, in fairness, it was not the only rationale, but there was a fair amount of discussion about the Honeywell plan. And I'm, because I wasn't at the table, and it's not really an ongoing dialogue, but it seemed to me that based upon the things that we heard during the presentation, during the motions for cutting those lines, the notion, or there was the belief at the table that the Honeywell improvements would improve efficiency going forward and therefore we would need less fuel. I didn't have the opportunity to speak to those at the time, but the Honeywell program that the school district invested in realized the efficiencies from the changes in year one. The benefit of those changes has to do with cost avoidance in every subsequent year. So as the price of fuel goes up, okay, the amount of fuel we need hasn't changed since we received the benefit of the reductions in year one, simply what we're paying based upon what we would have been paying has changed. So in order to sort of speak to the, one of the foundational pieces and one of the reasons that were given for those changes, I think it's important that we make a record of what the Honeywell program accomplished and how we're realizing the benefits. Right? Did I leave something out?
No, just a question for clarity. Was the adjustment in the number of gallons that were going to be used, or the unit price per gallon?
It was, it was across the board in dollars. There was discussion about usage, there was discussion about price. I think, and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we sort of veered away from price because I think that, as I understood it, there was an understanding that prices are unpredictable. Somebody at the table said, well, you know, at one point, gas was supposed, or fuel was supposed to go to 470 a gallon at the pump, and that never happened. Whether or not that was important to the people who voted, I don't know. But it did seem to veer a little bit away from price and back towards the need for the actual fuel. But I did, again, it wasn't a dialogue. People spoke to their motions, and it wasn't a question and answer situation, so.
Well, I think more the reductions were a function of taking the projections that Stacy had written and the board had approved, and recalculating it at $3.50, because that's what currently the town is paying. So that's where the reductions, the numbers for the reductions, I think, truly came about.
The town's paying 319, just like we are.
They're estimating it being.
Their estimate, and again.
But their fuel year starts in January, where our fuel year will start in September, October, so.
And it might have been two different conversations, because I was there Tuesday, and that was definitely the conversation.
No, no, in fairness, again, I focused on the conversation that occurred on Thursday when I was there. So there were, there were a bunch of different elements that made up that conversation and that people relied upon to support their rationale for making those changes. And in fairness, and I think, Jen, I think you said this, that if the price prediction is wrong and it's higher, the consequence of being incorrect is that the district will have to use resources that is, that it's appropriated for other things to pay for that cost, because we can't not heat the buildings. The consequence of the price coming in at less is that those dollars end up going back to the voters to reduce their taxes. So again, all of those things were on the table. Whether or not they will look to reconsider or change, I don't know, but they can.
I think something that should be considered is the sheer volume that we use as compared to the town. If there's a 20 cent difference in price, it doesn't affect them anywhere nearly as much as it's going to affect us.
You're correct.
Just by the sheer volume of oil that we use.
I, in my experience, in ten years, I've never seen those particular lines reduced. I, I came away with an understanding for the rationale, and simply communicating that. Again, there's still, they still have some more work to do. I don't believe that there has been any, at the budget committee, and again, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, any calculation of anticipated tax rates at this juncture in all likelihood. Because it's been part of that process in the past, that's something that we'll probably see on Thursday.
Are they not meeting tomorrow?
No, because by agreement of the committee, because there was a, there were a lot of people who might not be able to be there.
I don't believe they would have had a forum.
They pushed it to Thursday night and anticipated getting all their business done then. There's a little off.
And bringing the Jammies.
Any questions? Did I leave anything out, Jen?
I don't think so.
Suprent tennis report.
Just a couple things. One is, if you haven't noticed, Dominique, our student rep, hasn't been here. I have spoken with Mr. McBride, and she actually took a new job and has to work on Monday night, so she has resigned from her position. She just said she couldn't do, she just can't get here Monday nights and needs the employment. So they're actually, have been advertising to get a new board rep for us, so as soon as I have more information on that, I'll let you know. But I think she really wanted to do it to just conflict with the job opportunity she was given, so we will be working on that. Our HR department has been working really hard on updating and creating job descriptions for our staff. We don't have job descriptions, and are just making sure they're current. I, just looking for direction from the board on how you would like to proceed approving those. Do you want them to come to the full board for approval of job descriptions? Do you want them to come to the full board? Do you want them to come? There's not really, C and E, HR, neither of them have it as a job description. They should be kind of vetted by the board and approved. I'm just wondering how you would like to do that, because it's something we've been, Carol and I, is one of our goals, is to make sure we have updated job descriptions. That's it? So I'm just looking for how you would like to go forward with job descriptions.
May I make a recommendation that you finally sent out the entire board, and then we can put it in the agenda item, you know, at our meeting, and we can discuss it with the board? I don't know.
It's just something we haven't done in a really long time, so we thought it was time to look at them.
Well, how many are we counting, about 20, 30?
Well, we'd like to probably do all of them at some point. We don't have all of them. I think we have administrative and directors right now.
I mean, it, my guess is, is that they would, they might travel along because of the piecemeal nature in much the same way policies do.
Absolutely. It'll be spattering here and there as we, tons of them at the end, but.
And, and it seems to me that, that some of them might properly belong in one area. I mean, I could see some of these going to C and E, and I could see some of them going to HR.
So I mean, if we bring them to the whole board, and if anybody feels like they should go, be vetted somewhere else, we can do that.
Can we subcommittee?
I don't, I don't think they'll be really controversial.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, we'll bring them, bring them to the board, and then if at that time, there's a, there's a sense that we want a smaller subgroup to give a more thorough vetting, we can make that decision at the time.
Okay, perfect. I'd like to request that if we're going to receive them and have to vote on them, I'd like to receive them before the meeting, have a chance to.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have to vote on them.
You don't have to vote on them.
If you don't want to.
You can always, you can always see them at one meeting and vote on them at the next meeting, yeah. And there's no rush in the process, so it's not like we're setting a target by the end of the year to have them updated. It was just a project Carol and I have been working on for a while. This morning, we had a small bus accident at Mountain View, if anybody hears about it. And the reason it may, you only may hear about it is it was a bus, there were two buses parked. The one bus went to pull out, bumped into the bus behind them, did not realize it, and left. The other, so they went down, it was at the fifth and sixth grade lot, went down and dropped off kids at the seventh and eighth grade lot, so there was some, wait, that bus just hit us, kind of, and there were kids on both buses. It was just a bump, nobody was hurt at all, but there was the notion that the bus left. So you may hear that, I just, because kids will talk. So the bus company called me right away to let me know what happened, called the police, they came up, did the, you know, the report, and called, we called all the students down because of course the kids had all gotten off the bus at this point, we didn't know who the kids were. So we got them all down to the office, got their names, police department called all the parents. I don't believe everything's all sad, but in case you hear that, because I know how kids would be like, that was an accident, the bus driver left off, and next thing you know, we've got hysteria on our hands. So it was a very minor, I don't even think there was a dent on the bus, but it was just something that happened.
I've heard that story, so.
Yeah.
I didn't know I had it.
(laughing) I do want to ask the board to think about, so this is considering your next meeting. You have a meeting scheduled on Tuesday, on Monday, January 2nd, which is the Monday we come back. I want to put it out there, does the board want to consider changing that meeting to the 9th? And the only reason I say that is, it will, it's basically like five days from now with vacation week. We're hopefully finalizing some contracts, so if we needed to have some follow-up that next week, it buys the two committees a couple extra days, and then we can hopefully bring them on the 9th to the board. I think it just buys a, that's the only, there's no timeline on anything else, but we do have that, and I'm just thinking if we need that week after vacation to finalize any of those contracts, that you're going to have to meet anyway, because we have to have them ratified by last day for negotiations, it's the 10th. So that kind of works us right up to the last day if we change the meeting to the 9th. So I want to put that out as a thought.
So it sounds like you've gone kind of both ways with it. You want it earlier so that we're not right up against the 9th, but yet you'd like it on the 9th so that we've got time to negotiate.
Well, the 9th is just holding, yeah, the 9th is just kind of holding to your Monday meetings. You have, your meetings are scheduled the 2nd and the 23rd, because the 16th is the holiday. So if you did it on the 9th, it buys, I think, the two committees another week if you have to meet again for negotiations that next week. There's nothing vital that's coming up on the 2nd. So if you really had, you didn't have negotiations, there's almost virtually nothing on the agenda.
Yeah, that just gives us two weeks of business to meet on the 23rd, so it almost makes sense.
Right, it's almost like your first and third, it kind of puts it back together again.
That gives us two weeks of business on the 9th, two weeks of business.
Is there any objection to changing it to the 9th?
Just an observation that Lori said she won't be there on the 9th, she won't be at the, the meeting at all.
And Lori might be upset, her being each in hers on the 9th.
Yeah, MC, I did talk to MC, and they were, they looked at maybe if that was possibly changing that to the 30th, because I know we bumped that last month for other meetings. But the 30th is available to potentially do those meetings.
I'm okay.
Good.
Okay, do we have your consensus to change it to the 9th?
Yeah. Can we go with that and look at C then to the 9th as well?
Yep. And we do have a building committee meeting on that day, but we'll, I've already got a plan for that.
C and E is on the 9th as well.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll get, MC will get in touch with P and C and C and E.
And HR.
Ah, HR, I mean. So P and C can be at 6, I think we're all set with that. HR and C and E, MC will get in touch with you. I think she was looking at maybe the 30th as a potential date.
When is the next building committee?
It's that 9th. It was the 9th.
At 5?
When did they pick that?
Yeah, you know what, I have it in my book, but I don't have it written anywhere. I had it on the 9th at 5:30. And I don't really, I.
I don't think there is a date.
So we have to look at that, so I'm going to, Ray and I will speak it out tomorrow.
When we left, the committee noticed that Jeff and Phil had said that they wanted just to put the presentation together.
Yep, okay.
And then they would call a meeting after the presentation.
Okay. I think we originally scheduled the 9th to look at the RFP, to go over the RFP for the construction management. I think that may have been at the meeting before that, so we may not need that. So Ray and I will talk, but we figured that was okay.
Well, the RFP's not going to be back by that time, so.
Yep. Just a reminder, the budget committee scheduled the budget hearing for January 11th, which is a Wednesday, which is another thing, it's just two days after your meeting, so it'll be nice, you'll have up-to-date information for that hearing. Ray and I will have a new Boston school board meeting that night, which is also their budget hearing, so we'll do that first, and then we'll come over to Goffstown when that's done, just so you know why we're not there right beginning.
Can I take it that meeting starts at 7:00? And the auditorium?
Correct, yeah. Just an update from our last meeting on our building projects. The committee met, from the planning, we met with the planning board. The planning board had some concerns. CMK and the architects met with Megan, the town architect, they reviewed all the concerns. They came up with proposals for correcting those concerns that they had. They had some concerns with the river, some water, some runoff, and so CMK was able to address all of their concerns. Conservation Commission also had some concerns, so I think their planning, CMK and the architect and the engineer are planning to go to the Conservation Commission's meeting in January. We're going to get on the planning board's meeting for February, just to bring back those changes, so I believe that will resolve. Any questions or concerns? I think we've addressed all of their concerns, and so we should be all set after that.
The only question I would have, and I don't know if he was still there when they were talking about the fact that they're going to overlay Mass Road.
Yes, yep.
Next year. Why would we be disturbing the road? The work that we're going to do is on the school property, not?
It's the curving.
Just the curb cut?
It's the curb, it's the curb cut and the moving of the driveway. So it was something with the patching that you can't, if you, if you go over, if you go into the road that they just did, we have to repave the entire, because they'll have just repaved it. So we talked about potentially if we had money to be able to move the driveway now and the curb cut now.
Swordhokers.
Yeah.
Right, you can't just make a small patch in the road anymore. If it's been resurfaced within an extra period of time, we're required to do.
I understand that. I just don't understand why we would impact Mass Road, other than taking the curbing out.
Right.
Well, that's not going to affect the pavement on Mass Road.
Yes, because you actually got to dig out 12 inches into the road to remove the curbing properly. And you can't just pad the 12 inch spot. Under the, their policy is you have to repaint the area. If you can't just patch the twelve inch spot, under the, their policy is you have to repaint the area.
You don't have to, all of us, remember?
Yes, so I.
You tried to quote me from six years ago, huh?
Yeah, I, I think in the meantime, I think we've addressed all their concerns and so I think we have a solution to everything.
Yes.
Um, just a reminder, Dream Keeper and Cornerstone Awards, if you have any are due Wednesday to me, um, so if you're looking to nominate anybody, um.
Were you able to come up with a list of previous winners?
I did those.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, perhaps I'm reading that.
No, I asked Stacy if she's had it and she says, oh, if there's some individual, contact me, but I checked to find out if that person had it or not through another source, so.
Okay, okay.
I never sent her an email requesting that.
Oh, okay. Random.
Sounds familiar though.
I think they're all on the plaques.
Yeah.
All our names are on the plaques.
Well, that's how you, how I found out. I had to go over the plaque.
And just a reminder, those negotiating the G E A contract, we're meeting tomorrow at eight at the S A U. And Keith, has G E S S been finalized for Friday in Manchester?
Uh, I just checked my emails now to see if we had finalized it. Um, they do wanna do it on Friday Monday, but we have finalized the start time.
Okay.
It could be as early as eight fifteen or as late as nine o'clock.
Okay, so you'll let us know when.
Um, on Elm Street, the Hampshire Building?
I avoid Elm Street at all costs.
That's all I.
It's on the north end. Wouldn't you come over to Amosie Bridge?
Oh, Amosie, I find it okay.
The Elm Street building, yes, wouldn't you come over to Amosie Bridge? And that's the building that we. I can really show them that, but they, you know, money.
Okay, so at the last board meeting, I brought forward to the board, um, some thoughts about making up, Mountain View has two days to make up, taking staff input. I did, the, the board, um, we were looking at making up those two days, um, I did speak with administration. Um, in addition, in, since your last meeting, New Boston has also lost a day. Um, last Thursday, when we had that little bit of weather, um, they ended up having, I got a call about six o'clock, they had no power. They couldn't get the generator up running, so, um, about six fifteen, I had about a three-minute window to decide because we had to get, the buses were already heading out, so we ended up canceling school. Um, because they couldn't get the generator up and running, so about seven thirty-five, I got a call from new, the new principal saying, oh, we have power. I was like, I, I don't even wanted to hear that. So, so they have to actually make up a day as well because they, they'll be off sync as, so, um, they're going to actually make up the day on Tuesday, January tenth, so. I'm actually proposing Mountain View make up the day on January tenth, um, which is election day. They don't have elections in the school, so it's an easy day to do that. And Monday, February sixteenth, which is the Martin Luther King Day, um, the board agreed that if, because, January sixteenth, what did I say?
January?
January sixteenth. You said February.
February.
She was thinking President's Day.
January sixteenth, which is Martin Luther King Day, um, as the two days, the board agreed that because it's a paid holiday for administration, they would be able to take that day at a different time and they were fine with that. Um, so I'm bringing forward a proposal that, um, Mountain View make up those days. I'll work with the bus company, um, to reroute bus routes for the middle school so that they can be more efficient. We won't need twenty-three buses hopefully. Um, save on some costs and that will get Mountain View back up to where everybody else is, um, with the calendar, catch them up. Um, and we'll get the word out to teachers and parents and make sure everybody's really well aware of that, so. Um, I guess I would be looking for direction or a motion from the board to, uh, to, to that.
Make the motion to approve the makeup plan as presented.
Give me a second there. All in favor?
I'm in favor, Bill.
Thank you.
Intentions, we're unanimous.
My biggest nightmare is one of those is gonna be a snow day.
Even when you put those concentric circles.
Yeah. Okay, we have, um, Jeff Warren articles, so once again, here's, um, here are some warrant articles for you to look at. Some of them we just, we need to start making decisions on moving forward. Um. So, two, um. Article one will just be simply your school district officers and your school board. Article two is your budget and so we'll know that, that number won't get filled in until after I get a number from, um, the budget committee for your public hearing. Article three, um, will be your collective bargaining agreement with your teachers, should that get resolved before that time. Article four is an article you need to decide whether you want on there or not, so, um, this is an article that if the teacher's contract is, um, not passed, it allows you. Um, to call one special meeting to address cost items only, so that if you were to go back and renegotiate, it allows you, without going to the court system, to have a meeting. It is an optional article, you do not have to have this, I believe. I don't remember.
I guess.
We didn't, we did not have it on there last year. The board just determined that you did not want it on there or you did support staff last year, so.
Yeah, and when we say meeting, we're not talking about getting together here, we're actually talking about a town.
It's a town, school district meeting, yep. And it's expensive, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Um, so that's, that is only on there because I put it on there as an option, so, um, I would look for the board's direction on whether you want that on there or off. Take it off.
I don't, is, is there any, um, feeling that it is something that has value in terms of immediate or?
You know, I don't think it's something they're afford to do out anyways.
Well, in the watching, you know, this five thousand dollars minimum.
Right, right.
So if, if the contract is defeated, what that means is that salaries and benefits stay the same?
Correct. It, it's basically you do, you, if it's defeated, you do not have a contract. You go back to negotiating tables and it would go back on. You could actually petition the courts for a special school district meeting, or it would just go on next year's warrant. You renegotiate a contract to try to get this passed.
It's cheaper to petition the courts to have a special meeting than it is to, I mean, it's not that expensive to do that part. So I guess if we really felt necessary to do it, it's probably easier for us to do it rather than having, in my opinion, having this, this for both contracts, having this article there, only to lead to more confusion to people only heard about.
The same thing comes up in Article six.
Correct.
Um, which is, follows Article five, which is the, a warrant article on the G E S S collective bargaining agreement. If, if there is no reason, um, to leave Article four and Article six, I suggest that we go ahead and remove that, take them off.
What's the definition of a cost item?
The definition of a cost.
Well, it says you would meet to address a cost, cost items only.
So it would be just strictly items that have financial impact?
So, so if there was a contract that had language changes in it, the only thing that you could bring back to the voters to vote on would be the cost items.
Okay.
And, quite honestly, shouldn't do that.
No.
Yeah. Um, okay, so then Article seven is gonna be your area agreement, that is, I think we've had a meeting since then and I've talked about this, I'm losing track. Um, so that will be, I'm waiting for language from the Department of Ed on what that is, they'll give me the specific language, we'll insert that under Article seven. Article eight is the article for the renovation and addition of Maple Ave and Bartlett Schools for a cost of fifteen million sixty thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars. Um, so I guess at this point, or I suppose you could wait till the next meeting, I would be looking for a motion to move that forward to the budget hearing.
Hmm.
This has to bond up, which we're gonna talk about that.
I'm concerned about the placement of Article eight.
Yeah, we can rearrange them anywhere.
No, I really think it should be three.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So do we wanna go through and decide and get all the articles we want and then decide which order you wanna put them in? Would that make sense?
I don't think we even decide order type, do we?
Yeah, you can decide that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, one more meeting.
That, that, yeah. Because then we'll know about the, uh, contracts and everything.
Yep.
I could have better ways to do that.
Okay, so that's eight. Um, and then nine is, on the back is your article regarding, um, the high school.
Yep.
And it's for the purposes of developing and, and, now, this is all my language, so if anybody has better wording, uh, developing an athletic complex at Gulf Town High School to include a complete track and field. Artificial turf surface, lights and field seating, and for the purposes of renovating and expanding the Gulf Town High School, Dr. Craig Heber Auditorium. Um, and that's, uh, made generally two point eight million dollars for that warrant article. So those are.
Let's make the motion, remove article.
You don't need to make a motion, I'll do that.
Second.
You don't have to make a motion, Bill.
Well, it's more formal.
Did you say to move or remove?
Removed.
To remove. All right, I have a motion from Hank, a second from Suzanne. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Okay, but I think I did already go on a speeding, but I think it's just too, asking too much at one time. I don't think it moves everything.
Suzanne, would you like to add anything?
Looking at this warrant on my list of priority, priorities, that is definitely the last one. And I, and I agree with Hank, I think there's just too many, don't wanna give voters too many reasons to say no.
And the motion is second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say that I would ask that they would table their motion in their second until the next meeting, when we know what else will have their, like, for example, are we gonna have contracts on ballot and everything? I think it'd be better to look at it as a whole, next meeting, when we know exactly what will and will not be on there.
Any other discussion? Questions, Ray?
Quite honestly, to me, it doesn't matter how many other things are gonna be on.
Yeah, I would, I would respectfully vote against this, um, as you might remember in the last one, I think it belongs on the ballot. I just want to hand it over to voters and let them decide what is too much and what they want, what the priorities are, rather than us making the decision for them.
That's why we're here, to make some those decisions.
Well, yes, I'm not afraid of making the decision.
This is ridiculous.
But I also, we need to hand some stuff over to the voters to let us know.
They need to at least know what's going on.
Yes. I will.
Okay, I'll remove my motion. I'll follow Keith's suggestion.
And, and there is no motion on the floor at this time, this is a topic that may come up and maybe revisit it in our next meeting.
Yeah, I expect.
No, no, I understand.
And what about Articles four and six, have they, are we not?
Yeah.
Well, it has to be for just seven days.
Probably eleven. Eleven, can we get a decision on the ninth, it's only two days, it's not enough time. We can't hold the bond hearing later than the seventeenth of January.
Sorry, we're consulting on a day. So Ray is saying the, so if, to have a bond hearing, we need to have it by the seventeenth of January. We need to post it in the paper seventies before that, so by the eleventh, seven days before the hearing, so if your hearing was on the seventeenth, which is the last day, you can have the bond hearing. We need to post it in the paper by the eleventh, which means we have to get it to the paper a few days before, and.
If you're meeting on the ninth.
Ray, what specifically has to be on that? Does, is it the dollar amount that has to be on the?
Okay, so, so that leaves us with, with a couple of questions, I suppose. Um, if it's a, does it make it, do we have any flexibility?
In moving to January meeting, back to the second.
Yeah, well, that's what I was gonna say, that's the other.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that. Um, does it make any difference how they're bonded? I mean, the, the notices are still gonna be the same, right?
Well, you had that discussion at the last meeting, whether to go with one bond or two. I believe the, uh, board's position at that time was to go with two individual bonds. For, uh, to, to align one debt instrument with the elementary schools. The other with the high school, the second bond for the high school would obviously have an impact on sending districts. With, uh, kids coming in, into the school district here, that would mean some cost share that would have to go back that way. I believe that was one of the reasons the board decided to, to go with two instruments.
But in terms of timing, regardless of whether it's a single or two different instruments, um, we, we still have the same constraints.
You still have the same time gates, yes.
That means that, that sort of leaves us with two choices. We either make a decision now, um, or change our meeting so that a decision that gets made.
On the second.
In about ten days. Will, will leave us ample time to deal with the posting of the bond.
Having a, having a meeting on the second, though, should, should give us the budget number? And shouldn't it also give us the contract number?
Well, see, yeah, so if you meet on the second, which you can absolutely do, it will, you won't need to make a decision on your warrants today, you could meet on, you could do it on the second. And it's the bond, that's the real issue. The cha, the op, the issue, though, would be you po- potentially need to meet again to ratify contracts. If contracts don't get resolved, and we need that another week.
Jenny, if you want more information, we can go on the public address.
I have a question, um, that, that might, um, make this a little more clear to people of what we should do at this time. Um, as far as number eight and number nine go. Am I right in thinking that we will have a, um, yes, okay, a budget, school board, whether we recommend it in the budget meeting, whether they'll recommend it? If they're already taking, um, almost four hundred thousand dollars out of our budget, I don't believe they're going to recommend either, you know, eight or nine. And if you read the article in the paper today, everybody votes according to what the, um, budget committee says, so.
Do you see it?
Throwing that article out.
You did check what.
That, uh, thought out to you, um, that, you know, and it, I, I think in a lot of, a lot of elections, that is actually exactly what happens. It's not approved by the budget committee, it's, um, not voted in, so I'm wondering if, if we're putting these in and, um, they're just gonna be rejected because of that.
So I think either the board, so we either need to make a commitment on eight or nine tonight, so that we can move forward with the bond hearing, or change the meeting to the second.
The numbers that are in here for eight, were those numbers before or after we have the meeting with the drainage problems and the added costs of fixing that on?
Those are before.
Before, so we, these numbers need to be amended upward.
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I have no idea, we don't have any cost.
We don't know what that number is.
I don't, no.
I think it was a small enough dollar amount that, my assumption from that meeting was that we could.
Fifty, it was an estimate of fifty thousand dollars.
With the, between the soft costs that we had.
I think if you, if you put a hundred thousand in there, you'd be safe.
Yeah. What is the board's budget?
Maybe I'll break that one question. We're gonna, we're gonna need to be, but we have to know what's gonna be in this thing. Due to the bond.
Maybe we should meet on the second.
Or you can just meet on the second.
Maybe we should meet on the second.
Are we gonna meet on the second of the ninth?
Like a poll.
Well, that's, that's true. So you can meet on this, looking way up, so.
Yeah.
If, if you decide tonight on these two warrant articles, you can meet on the ninth, which then will cover you for your collective bargaining, should it go later. If you don't wanna decide on these tonight, you need to meet on the second to finalize these, knowing that you could potentially then also need to meet again if we don't have collective bargaining done. And need another meeting to ratify those contracts.
If we set time before today, and if we could finalize it tonight, do my motion back?
That's fine. Is there a second to hang, Bill?
Yes, I'm seconded again.
Suzanne, seconded? Um, if there's no further discussion, um, all in favor of the motion to remove Article nine. As a warrant article from the ballot for March two thousand twelve. Raise your hands. One, two, three. All opposed? I have three opposed, abstentions.
Something standing, feel like, like, not the appropriate time to vote.
Motion clearance.
So do you wanna make a motion to move eight and I forward?
Um.
Lori's having.
Yeah, but what was the tone of that last vote? Three, three, one. There's eight people here, oh, okay.
So it's three, two.
Three, three, two.
You don't make the big bucks, don't stand, you guys.
I, I, I'm just not ready to, to make that decision yet.
That's fine. Um, I think that, uh, under those circumstances, um, you need to meet on the second. I don't, and, and then you run the, you run the chance of, um, having to come back again and take a vote on, on collective bargaining proposals. And then you run the, you run the chance of having to come back again and take a vote on collective bargaining proposals, to ratify them. Which, which the good news is, is it's not a long process to go through that.
Right, yep.
You need a motion to come back on the second, to talk about it again.
Right, right.
Okay, so we're not going to touch them right now, we're not going to move them forward, we're going to meet on the second? And we'll put that as a main agenda item.
I'm not standing here on that.
Great.
Oh, so you already agreed for that?
But you need to make a motion to do that.
Yeah.
Or if the original one fails, does that mean you're following with it? With both articles? Yeah, so you need another motion to reconsider.
You're right.
I know.
This is just a stick one. It's, it's called a symmetrical motion, so we need a motion to move the discussion on the warrant articles forward to the second.
I'll make that one.
And is there a second?
A second.
Because voting down the motion that was on the table
Then requires you to do something.
Requires us to do something.
Send both to the, send both to the ballot.
We just vote on the whole warrant, we don't have one article.
Uh, we're
Whatever.
It's, it's a, if anything, it's a point of order, but it's current. All in favor of moving the warrant article conversation forward to the January second meeting? All opposed, abstentions?
I'm opposed.
There's three abstentions. All in favor?
I'm opposed because I don't think I'm going to be able to make that meeting.
Do you have a cell phone, can you dial it?
I suppose.
Okay. If, if we need to, we can make arrangements for that.
And we can have phones.
Yeah, Jenny just called, we don't want to second for you.
Right, yeah, but we'll be prepared so that you can do that.
Who can I?
Have we struck Articles Four and Six, or is that?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did. And we did that not with motion, but by consensus.
Motion by, by consensus, yes. Okay, that's it.
Um, any other bond information?
Again, the point is probably moot now, we'll just review the critical dates.
Okay.
The hearing cannot be held after January seventeenth, which is a Tuesday. Which, and there's also a requirement that public notice appear in a community distribute, distribution newspaper, which I would assume we want to use the Gofstown News. That would have to appear, wow. It would have to appear on the sixth again, yeah. I don't know if you can pull that one off, unless we go with the union leader.
Yeah, I mean, we can use the union leader and Concord Monitor, as opposed to the Gofstown News, I wouldn't tie it up just for that.
Yeah. This one is, it's a date impediment to go with the Gofstown News.
For the night, eleventh, we can get it to them by the ninth.
Yeah. And then again, at the, at the hearing, there would be a presentation of the anticipated debt schedules for the bonds, description of what is, what proceeds, bond proceeds are going to be used for. And in essence, pass, be ready to answer questions on project and the bond funding after that.
So given that, would we like to schedule that bond hearing date so that we can all get it on our calendars and?
Yes. What is the time where we're part of the hearing?
The hearing has to be conducted by January seventeenth, that's the latest date.
It has to be by the seventh.
How long have we been scheduling it on that?
Seventeenth, we can do, if we did it earlier, Ray and I both have a Dunbarton Board meeting that night.
Is there anything else that you have coming up in the same timeframe before that that would, that would bring us all together?
I know. Let's see, area meetings after that, we don't have a school board meeting on the sixteenth?
No.
No, it's twenty thirty.
Holiday.
Sixteenth is a holiday.
Will we move that school at Montezale?
Well, I mean, if, if this, if the board could do like a five or a five thirty hearing, I don't know if that's too early for you to consider a hearing.
Wait, did you get the topic?
Tuesday, seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday, the seventeenth, we just say, we have to be in Dunbar, but it's, we're six thirty.
That's funny, you've got bad weather, you don't want to pick the last possible day.
No.
So Monday.
Because that's, that's a crapshoot, just a bit of weather. I wouldn't pick the seventeenth, so Tuesday's the...
Tuesday's the seventeenth?
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of...
Monday the sixteenth the holiday, that we don't have a meeting?
Yeah.
Well, that would be a holiday for us.
I don't think administration would be picking on another day.
Well, that would be Mountview District.
We thought you'd be there to support the team.
Friday the thirteenth.
No, Friday's, nobody will.
And we can't have it on the ninth?
You could have it on the ninth if you decided today what you were doing with the bonds.
It's Thursday the twelfth, look like, for folks. Give you a couple of days to recuperate after the elections.
The twelfth is, it's Gofstown, it's the budget hearing, snow day, if the eleventh is snow.
Twelve, because arguably, we don't, we can all, we can afford that, because twelve, we'll be there anyway.
You can all be there. Yep.
How much time do we need?
Well, if it does be eleven. Twelve. So we're back in the seventeenth, one, two, three.
The fourth.
Is it seven days including the weekends or business days?
It would have to be. Yes.
It includes the weekends? So it's not fair, if we do it on the twelfth. Yeah, well, Monday, we couldn't, we, we could do the Concord Monitor and like, we couldn't do the Gofstown News, though.
Monitor and the union leader.
We'd probably just be hitting it if we did it on the twelfth.
Well, I thought we were talking about the eleventh.
Does it matter to me?
Because of the fact that we're, Muslims will be going to the hearing, I didn't know if you wanted to try to squeeze it just before.
The eleventh, Ray and I could, we have New Boston that night.
Oh, okay.
So we have like too much going on, this year, if you're not looking.
Since we're everybody.
No, it didn't seem this way last time.
I guess we gotta let someone succeed from the union leader, if we have time.
So we'll have the twelfth? Is that the consensus day?
That, that's, that twelfth?
Is it twelfth?
Sounds like the only day.
That's what I'm hearing.
Thursday the twelfth.
Thursday the twelfth, uh...
Seventeenth, I don't know. What time, what time works?
Anytime after, six o'clock on there.
You guys tell me, six works fine. Earlier, the better for me, though.
Thursday, the sixth?
Okay, six o'clock, okay, on the twelfth? Six o'clock, on the twelfth?
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, we get that posted and, so we won't get that posted until after the second. Okay, Ray, anything else on the bond?
That's it, that's enough, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you said enough, thank you.
No business. Do we need a request for approval for Eagle Scout project?
Yep, I have a request from Matt Evans, who is actually here in the audience, who has requested, he's working on his Eagle Scout project. And he has requested to be able to do a little bit of work at Mountain View on the cross-country trail. He must have put in some new signs, worked on some, maybe some bridge work and some trail work. And so I have spoken both with Jim and both the middle school and the high school athletic director who support this project. So Matt, I don't know if you want to say a couple of words about what you'd like to do? Maybe you can kind of come right up here in the center.
Yeah, I don't have much more to add, you really covered all of it. My project would consist of cleaning up the trails, making a new sign, and maybe doing some of the bridges. And then the big thing I would like to focus on is making an observation area on a part on the trails. This would be a really big benefit to not only the school, but the community, because it wouldn't cost anybody anything really, because I have to do all this fundraising on my own. And I think it would just be a lot nicer experience for kids and staff to do it together. And I, I just want to make this part clear, or even, even if I do get an approval from you guys, there is no guarantee that I'll be able to do this. Because I also have to go to the Eagle Board, and they're going to be the ones that have the final say on whether I can do it or I can't. And that alone can take up to three months, so that's really all I have, does any questions?
Any questions?
I, I assume you're trying to try to accomplish it in spring, right?
What?
I assume you're trying to accomplish this, to do it in spring?
Um, yeah, I'm going to be, hopefully, if I can get an approval from the Eagle Board by around April, I'm going to be doing fundraising up to around end of June. And then hopefully just get it all done, going into the fall, but then if that doesn't, if that doesn't finish, finish up what I have to finish, and then go fundraiser over the next winter. Then go back into the next summer, spring and summer.
Sounds like an ambitious project, Matt, thanks very much.
And what will you approve?
Second.
Let's see, I got about three motions in about six seconds, so I think you actually may have taken a vote. Hank made the motion, Jenny seconded, all in favor. Opposed, abstentions. Matt's, thank, thank you very much for thinking about the project and, and for doing something that if you can do it and it approves, will absolutely benefit both the district and the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
May I just say, as a community member, we often goes no shoeing on the trail.
It would be just really wonderful to have them in better shape, so, thank you.
Request for boys volleyball?
Actually, we have some audience members as well here for this. We have, the Gofstown Volleyball Servers bought forward a proposal to start a boys varsity volleyball team, which would run in the spring. They are looking to fully fund it through a variety of different things, one is some volleyball server money that they've accumulated with the notion that they have wanted to start this boys team. I have spoken with both Frank McBride and Steve Fountain, who both support the notion of starting a, a boys team. We did check Title Nine numbers to make sure that everything's equitable and it is okay. And so I guess I'm going to turn it over to you folks if any of you have any comments or thoughts about this.
Good evening, I am Matt Leonard, I'm a tenth year teacher at Gofstown High School. I, I started coaching at the school about fifteen years ago, and for the past eleven seasons, I've been the girls volleyball coach. These are Randy Cathy Roganbuck, the co-presidents of the Gofstown Volleyball Servers, our booster organization, and the parents of two freshman students at Gofstown High School. And this is Sarah Stank, a fourth year teacher in our district, the JV Girls volleyball coach over that same time, the twenty eleven JV Division One Coach of the Year. And, and with your approval, our first varsity boys volleyball coach. After gaining the support of our athletic director, principal, and superintendent, we would like to thank you for considering our request of adding boys volleyball to the high school's co-curricular offering. We are seeking to add this sport for one reason, to meet the needs of the students in our district. We are all striving to give our students quality opportunities, and boys volleyball fits the bill. Four factors converge to make this the appropriate time to add boys volleyball. First and foremost is the interest from the current boys in our high school. There's a core group of students ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders interested in playing the sport, which suggests sustainability over the long haul. Second is that the boys volleyball is an emerging sport in our state. Last year, the NHIA moved boys volleyball to the spring season, with that, a forty-four percent jump occurred in member schools. This year, it is anticipated to be at least another fifteen percent increase in participation, is my belief that the, this trend will continue. Third are the benefits associated with volleyball in our school, in its competitive and recreational forms, volleyball is a lifelong, healthy activity. Also, with Sarah's leadership, a new group of students will develop critical life skills, such as time management, commitment to the greater good, working as a team, and learning to win with grace. Finally, and maybe most important to some in our community, is that we have a solid support organization to Gofstown Volleyball Servers. We are asking to start the boys volleyball program with the understanding and capability of self-funding the teams. I would equate what this organization does to what the booster groups do for hockey, football, and lacrosse in our town. A partial list of the support this organization provides includes fully funding two girls volleyball teams in our district, sponsoring a banquet for the entire program, hiring an offseason conditioning coach, and awarding a scholarship for every one of our volleyball's graduating seniors. This organization is strong and committed to a successful boys volleyball program in Gofstown. It is our belief that boys volleyball serves our students' best interests, and we look forward to providing this platform to advance quality opportunities for our students. Again, thank you for this consideration. Thank you.
Questions?
Would you start this spring?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I believe they're ready to go.
Sounds like it.
How, how many schools in the state participate with boys leagues?
Currently, there's, anticipated to be fifteen this year. Over a six-year period, when it was in the fall, there was eight and nine teams. Last year was the first year in the spring, it bumped up to thirteen, and this year's anticipated to be fifteen.
Any hesitation?
Um, we would organize it, but it would be, again, fully funded by the volleyball servers.
Suzanne? How long is your group anticipating being able to support this financially?
Uh, as long as needed.
Don't ever say that.
Is it for the economy or for the...
We got that in the minutes, right?
In that case, I'll make a motion that we approve this request.
Okay.
Under those guidelines.
Guidelines that the volleyball servers continue to fund it.
Yes.
I guess I have a couple of quick questions, not necessarily for you, but just so that we can get some clarity around this. We typically, the, the district has typically funded, for the most part, coaching positions. Are those things that are, I'm, I'm almost done, I'm almost done, are those things that are captured by the collective bargaining?
No, any, the only positions that are captured are ones that are already in there. We have, actually, a lot of the organizations fund a lot of coaching positions.
So is it fair to say that this is, at least today, and until there is some other decision made, a, a motion that would bring boys volleyball within the auspices of the school? And would allow them to compete as members of the school community and be recognized by NHIA?
Correct.
Is there anything on this one? Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed, abstentions, or unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let me know when the first game is.
Great, awesome.
Got to text my son.
That's a meeting.
I don't know, but he might, he might want to.
U Penn Model Congress trip request is a repeat event?
It's a repeat trip, they're looking to go to Penn State, again, they have six students.
Hold on, wait a minute, they go to Penn State or University of Pennsylvania?
Wait, Penn State? University of Pennsylvania, yeah.
There's just a little difference.
Oh, come on. Penn Model Congress, let's see, they're, it's Thursday, March twenty-ninth to Sunday, April first. There are two chaperones, Art Ferrier and Kathy Sargent, with six students, and this is a repeat out-of-state field trip, so.
So unless there's a motion to the contrary, the board will approve it. After the twelve, thirteen?
I'd like to put that off to the next meeting.
We will.
Still working.
The default budget?
Yep, Ray handed out a copy of the default... Yep, Ray handed out, um, a copy of the default budget. I believe it's the same as the last one you had seen.
It is.
At this point, we would just be asking you to make a motion to approve, um, the default budget.
The calculation.
The calculation.
Default budget calculation.
Got me. The calculation. It's not a budget, it's a calculation.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen default budget calculation. For a total amount of, gosh, heavy small grid.
Thirty six. Thirty six, one eighty-two, one sixty-four.
Wait a minute.
Now, I think that's what I saw.
Yeah, that's not the number.
That's not the number I'm seeing here.
It's the very bottom, to the right. It's no, not so far.
Yeah, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred ten, two hundred fifty-three thousand.
No, that's your proposed budget. The line, the first s- the first word in that section is the
Oh, yes, okay, yeah. Thirty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars, and one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Thirty?
Thirty six million.
Thirty six million.
Woo! All right, I'd like to say thirty-six thousand. Thirty-six million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second. Whatever.
Second. Uh, any questions? Seem not all in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed, abstentions? Okay.
She was
Three unanimous.
I was reading, I'm sorry.
Greg, could you make one typographical correction on your paper? Right in this here, you say default budget. Do we really wanna call it default budget, or are our calculations for the budget, uh, oh, I don't know?
Default calculation.
Default budget calculation.
Default calculation.
Be three words.
You got me.
So if you would just be so kind as to change that typo, that would be great.
No, he answered on the top.
He answered on the top, but you missed it on the spot.
We're not too picky, we just
Moving right along, Dunbarton School Board request for fifth and sixth grades sports.
Yep, so this actually came out of an area review committee meeting, um, that I'm now bringing here, because it's the more appropriate venue to bring this up in. Dunbarton had asked if it was possible for fifth and sixth graders from Dunbarton to participate in athletics here at the middle school, um, because they're so small, they don't often able to have a team. And so that's part of that process. I agreed, well, let me just look at it and see what the opportunity is or not. And so I met with, um, both Mike Garrity and Steve Fountain, had a good conversation with them. Um, and in a, in a sense, there's two sets of sports. One is our six through eight sports that have cuts, so such as soccer, field hockey, volleyball, basketball, baseball, softball, lacrosse. Um, and then we have kind of the non-cut sports. In the fall, we have cross-country. In the winter, we have wrestling, and spring, we have track. So we kind of focused taking them into two pieces. So they were not recommending, um, we look at having them allowed to play cut sports. Typically, sixth graders oftentimes are the ones who get cut, and our fear is we don't, we do not want Dunbarton students to out, to be able to have a spot over a Goffstown student. And since sixth grade for those sports is the tough year to even get in, um, so they were not recommending it. We did, so we went to, um, the non-cut sports and said, what does that look like? So right now, for cross-country, we have typically fifty to fifty-five participants. We have one coach and one assistant. In wrestling, we have about fifteen participants, and we have one coach. For track, we have eighty participants on average with one coach. Um, so one of the, one of the thoughts that we had in bringing this in, the reason I'm bringing this forward is to get kind of consensus from you if I can approach the Dunbarton Board for this or not, is if they would be, I think the administration would recommend you allow them to participate in those sports with the agreement that they paid for an additional coach to participate. They had to transport their kids from Dunbarton here, that they had to be, yeah, and back, and that they had to pay if the trans, if their students bumped us over to needing another bus. So in other words, fifteen students, you could get five more and still nee- only use one bus. With eighty students and you add five more or ten more, it would bump us into maybe a second or a third bus. And so if their students required us to bump into another bus, then they would need to pay for that additional bus. As well, they would need to pay some kind of a fee for the, uh, officials, for uniforms, for all of that. I don't, we didn't know what that looked like, but the, there would be certainly the fee involved in that, likely the cost of a uniform, likely the cost, a portionate share of the official's time. And so, um, and in fact, probably a portion of the coach's time. So that was kind of what we came up with as just a quick, could we think about this? And so I'm bringing it to this board, um, to get your thoughts, whether you want me to approach Dunbarton with this, whether the board's thinking this is a great idea, not a great idea, um. Yeah.
Um, these activities take place immediately after school's over?
Yes, they're all after school till about five o'clock.
So they would be quite a timeline to get Dunbarton students here?
Yeah, they, they actually get out of school at two forty-five. Um, I do know, actually, they get out at two thirty. They, they get out significantly earlier, and it's by design, so that their students use the buses and they go to the sc- so they use the flip side, so they use the same buses, and then they trap, transport here, they get all their kids home before they actually do their middle school and high school runs to use those same buses. So they are actually early, so getting here wouldn't be a problem, because they get out of school early enough to get here.
But I guess one of my concerns would be getting them back to Dunbarton.
Yep. Parents would need to come pick them up.
A way bus. There's no way bus.
Yeah, they
They have a way bus.
Dunbarton mustn't have a way bus. Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The games don't, or the meets, whatever, don't usually start to look for anyway. Generally speaking.
But the, the concern I have is if the sports are at an away venue, and sometimes students are dismissed early from school, they would need to be dismissed early, obviously, from there.
From there, yeah. Yeah, parents would be responsible for getting them here, dismissing them.
What's their reason for this?
For what, for asking for this?
Yeah, what's the reason?
I, I think the notion of just trying to involve their students more in sports that, um, they don't, because they're so small, they, fifth and sixth grade, they don't really have an opportunity to do much with athletics. Um, and so just how, how can they get their kids more involved?
And also, it was to be part of the feeder program.
Yeah.
I know part of it was on the, um, on the cut programs, um, like field hockey and lacrosse, where they don't have like a feeder program. This would help
So when they get up to middle school, they're behind the kids already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're already at a disadvantage when they come in at seventh grade.
But I don't know if that's our responsibility.
Well, as long as they're paying for it.
And Anna doesn't
But it sounds like it's gonna be a very complicated thing to work out.
Well, it would be a matter of them agreeing they're gonna transport, and then they're gonna have to pay for a coach, whatever that looked like, and then there'll be some kind of fee involved for sport. I mean, we'd have to kind of come up with what that fee was. I don't know how to.
If I may, Ken, actually, this way.
Um, I'd like to know if we can make, uh, or direct you to somehow put Steve Fountain and the middle, middle school, athletic directors together with the folks who put this proposal to you, and see if they can work out a mechanism before we spend a lot of time talking about it, not knowing what
Yeah, this was, this, this actually came from a meeting with Mike Garrity from the middle school and Steve Fountain.
Can they hammer something out and say, here are the, here are the options? This, these are the numbers we're talking about. Are we talking about five kids? Are we talking about thirty-five kids?
Yeah, I, I don't know, and this is why I was bringing, because I, we didn't go far into, I, I didn't wanna spend a whole lot of time trying to come up with a calculation, a cost, if this board
Right.
didn't wanna go there. Um, and then my next notion was to ask the Dunbarton Board if they really even would consider paying all this money. Because I, I guess that's, so I was looking forward, I, I didn't, I don't, I don't wanna honestly spend a whole lot of time if this board were to say, yep, not interested, and or, yeah, ha- engage Dunbarton and see if they're interested, and then we'll hammer out some kind of what that looks like.
I, I would recommend we engage them, because if we are talking about thirty-five kids over the various sports, and we're talking about a significant part of their student population, and those kids should not be denied an opportunity to take, to get into athletics if they so desire, and their parents are willing to take up that burden of transportation. I mean, we're, you know, I think it's detrimental to the, the students if they don't at least get that opportunity.
Yeah, I, I really think we need to feel for the numbers, because what you're proposing, if they only have three students participating, I don't think it's fair to make them pay for another coach. I, I think you gotta get an idea, whatever numbers they want, and are they willing to discuss these type of costs?
Are they even aware of some of these costs?
So, so could I, so would it, would an appropriate next step be for me to go to Dunbarton, tell them that there's, this is kind of the thought, and let's do a survey of maybe, um, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade parents of who might be interested at a cost, or, you know, would that be maybe, I don't, I don't know how else to do it, is to, to get an idea
Are we generally receptive as a board to, to, you know, facilitating this?
I just need a bit more information before we proceed.
Of what, just fifth and sixth grade?
Fifth and sixth.
Okay, we're not turning it down.
No, I just want some more information before we
Explore.
Figure out how
Jenny's waiting patiently with the call.
The impact, the, um, impression that I got at that meeting, that it was single parents that were, had asked previously to be allowed on the teams, and they would pay, and they weren't allowed to. So my thought was, there were like small numbers that they were talking about.
That, that's my impression, too.
So I think really, what we need to do is like, these parents were saying, well, we will pay. You know, they weren't looking at it as a school-wide thing necessarily.
Yeah, let's try to get our hands on it.
Just to be able to have the permission to
It's realistic based on super large numbers, else they'd have enough to do their own program.
Well, it could be spread across four or five schools.
Right, except sometimes when you bring it up and they know there's availability, others may go, oh, I didn't know I can do that.
Right.
You know?
Okay.
And I have to agree with Ginny, um, my impression, when we had the discussion that evening when Dunbarton asked that question, was that the school district wasn't necessarily paying, the parents were gonna pay. So I, I, yeah, no, from something they said, I got that feeling, so I guess I want more clarity. My thoughts were, we're talking a number of three, five students, from what they talked, is what I got the impression of.
And they were talking about cut
If we're talking thirty-five students, that's an, that's an issue.
They were talking about cutting, cut sports, too, like
Right, they want to be able to do cut sports as well, yes.
Particularly. Which I have a problem with, I think, 'cause
Yeah, and that was everything.
Like fifty kids to begin with.
Well, I mean, you've got eighty kids who are going to coach, you can't
Let's figure out if there's a problem.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because if it's only three students
Okay, let me, let me bring it to Dunbarton, and I'll ask the questions of what's the, the board's notion? Is this something you would be paying for, parents paying for, and then can we get a gauge on how many students this needs? And then at some point, we'll bring it back. I don't think this is our urgent topic, so just continue to slow work on it.
But even in the cut sports, I think that there are some sports that don't complete a roster, perhaps, in their B teams.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And I think at that point, I, I would like to see the opportunity extended, because specific to field hockey and other cut sports, I know that, um, their benches are slim.
On the B teams, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, the, those kids wanna play.
And again, I, my recommendation would be to start small, see what you get. Um, because again, each sport like way has a different cost mechanism. I just don't wanna spend a whole lot of time to, yeah, I don't wanna waste forty hours of our administrators trying to calculate what this is gonna cost to have one student participate in every sport, and we spend the cost benefit just may not be there, and so let me do a little research. I just, I didn't wanna go forward with it to Dunbarton without some acknowledgement from the board that that was a good thing to do.
And you could add to that, if there was a year where the B sports couldn't fill a roster and parents wanted to come forward and pay, then they could, you know? But that would be on a year-to-year team, team basis, I think.
Yeah. Let's see what it looks like. Um, Dunbarton request for area clarification.
Yep, so we, um, Dunbarton at their last board meeting requested a joint area school board meeting for the purposes to discuss, of discussing the computation of tuition rates, particularly the rental rate as outlined in Section Three B of the area agreement. Um, they would like to clarify the appropriate form of appraisal for the calculation and to discuss any resultant adjustments. So, um, I have the letter for the Goffstown Board here for you. Um, and so out of this, what I need is who your, the three representatives will be who will sit on that, for that meeting, um, and then, um, I will work with those three, the nine members to try to schedule that meeting in. They have requested it to happen prior to January fourteenth, um, but I do know that
District for the next tuition.
Yeah, um, Philip had requested that we begin looking at an appraisal process to get a new appraisal done. And so with that, um, I will have a conversation with Rainey, um, and ask him if he still wants to keep that date of January fourteenth. But I still, I was trying to get the three board numbers from each board before I went to the rest.
Yes.
Uh, the area committee, everybody has equal votes on the area committee. There's no weighted votes, right?
Correct.
So.
And this is a joint area school board meeting.
Yes.
The, the, the present area agreement, as with regu- regarding this specific issue, um, allows at least for an appraisal of the building at the, at the request of one of the sending districts. And we bear the cost, which then gets a portion. Um, so that part, um, I think is pretty straightforward. Though there are
They're going on different appraisals till, till two thousand fourteen, right?
They may request, um, at any time.
And we have to pay for it.
And then it gets a portion, yes.
Because they get a
So forward.
Yeah.
Um, it is, it's, my recollection is, is, is that without a request, it's on a five-year basis.
Right.
Um, but somebody may request, and there's a foundation for doing so, and this is, and so I don't necessarily have a problem with it. Um, so all, all their request does is trigger, so if we can get on the start of selecting an appraiser and going through that process, that's fine, because that's consistent with, um, what the area agreement requires, and they've asked for it.
Um, can I, can I, can you clarify something before that meeting? Um, could, I'm not sure that it would not allow for a weighted vote.
No.
I, I, I think you need to check, I think we might be able to call a weighted vote on that.
I don't think you can.
Nope, not for the area.
No, not in the area.
Yes, A U you can, area you cannot.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, there is no language in the area agreement which speaks to that.
Oh, state, state law, you can't.
It's been a while since I've read it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's e- vote is equal on the area committee.
Um, with regard to, again, we need three people, because there aren't, there's not, there's not just one issue. There are actually two calculation issues that need to be addressed. Um, and it's, it'd be interesting to see how it falls out.
Like I said, you could go to down six to three, really easy.
Um, I, well, it's not, I don't think it'll, it's not a question of voting. Um, it's just a question of getting the numbers right. Um, so I'm, I'll be happy to, because I know already familiar with the issue. I need two other people who are gonna be around in January.
I don't know how to be around in January till about four o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Do you wanna just do the committee members that are now on the area agreement?
No, I'm not gonna be here.
Suzanne's not gonna be here.
I'll sit in on that, if you continue.
Keith, if you're around, will you do it?
Yes.
And if he's not Well, like, well, we Stepping in as a suitable so.
Okay.
Non-suitable so.
Right.
Okay, great, yeah, if I'm, if I know I'm gonna have a conflict, I'll know in the next couple, next day or so. If that's the case, I'm more than glad to see Ken do it.
Okay. So it'll be Keith, and if Keith can't do it, Ken will fill, we'll do it.
Right.
Thank you. Um, area review committee, so the, after seeking legal counsel, the legal counsel did advise that we start that process kind of just paperwork-wise over again, because in fact, the committee who met did their job, which was to amend the area agreement. Um, and so she, she's just recommending we just, uh, if, Goffstown, I have a letter drafted for you that says the, basically the same thing as the last letter, that you would like to join at the table. Um, I'll present it to the other two boards at their next two meetings, we'll get nine people back to the table, um, and just continue the process, so.
Well, we, we have some existing work that's already
I don't, yep, so, um, if that's okay, I guess I would just need a motion for this board to request Dunbarton and New Boston to enter the, um, an amendment or extension of the area agreement.
Yes. Question, second? Ginny, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions?
Right, now I need three representatives for that committee.
It's presumptive, isn't it?
Why should we speak with my work?
You should do that for me, too, if I'm not out.
She can read our minds.
I could cross, mix it out and make
The sh- in my case, it's a short book.
So what three members would like to sit on that committee, could be the same three members, different three?
I'm fine with it.
Well, I mean, I'm fine, but I'm, you guys know I'm not gonna be there for chunk it down, so.
When they look into, when's this looking to be?
We have our next meeting on January twenty-sixth, I think, is already scheduled.
I have election issues, so I, I possibly need it.
Well, we'll, we'll hold on to you until we have to like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I probably may be available until late tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, let's, can, can we circle back, and we'll have three people.
Yep.
I mean, I've been
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Just a quick question, the appraisal
Yes.
Uh, that we're going on after. I'm anticipating that it's, uh, going to hit a threshold where we're where we need to publicly advertise the opportunity. And then we'll need to develop some kind of a ranking mechanism. Does the Board want to be heavily involved in that, is my question.
I guess the beginning, sorry.
I'm expecting that the appraisals are going to exceed or hit the value that will require us to go out for a public bid.
Oh.
And to what extent does the Board want to participate in that?
Or we can just do it and bring the recommendation A and out to the Board?
I think that's fine, yeah, I think that's fine, too.
Yeah. Post it compliant with the qualifications set forth in the statute. That will make everybody very happy.
Sure. And please be sure to put it once again on our website. Absolutely. If there's certain individuals, like to check our website for that.
Uh, no resignations?
Yep, I am.
Your college is not you.
No. I can't bring it to this board, it doesn't make any difference.
Oh, that's right.
I am bringing forward the resignation of Cassandra Bochin, reading teacher at Maple Lab, effective December sixth. Taking for a motion to accept that resignation.
Hang moves. For the second?
Ginny, second.
For the second? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Three unanimous.
The rest are just notifications. We have two student interns. Jeff Burton from NHTI is going to be working with Gary Drolleman in Technology. Catherine Yarnall from St. A's is going to be working at Bart Linn's, doing elementary ed with Mary Starvish and Tiffany Garen. We have four student teachers coming in January. We have Rebecca Patterson from Southern New Hampshire, working here at the high school in social studies. Mary D. Felice from Southern New Hampshire as well is going to be working in English. Elizabeth Richardson from King State College is going to be working with Heather Welsh in biology. And Dan Fortier from the New Hampshire Institute for Art is, we're going to be working with Eva Lane in the art department.
Has anything told these students how fortunate they are?
Absolutely.
Serious. Any other business that may legally come before the meeting?
I just have a request for clarification. Are we meeting on the second or the ninth?
Second.
Yes.
Yep.
That's where it is currently, but just wanted to make sure.
And we will complete the evaluation, then.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And everybody should go off and have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Spend time with your families. We need a motion to adjourn for Sunday.
Someone?
I'll second it.
Again, motion for the second, all in favor?
Say hi, you two.
Three in a row.
A journey? You know, a journey.